Thrilled today to have San Angel Police Chaplain Ralph Dawkins leading in both.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father, once again, you have gathered these city and community leaders whom you have given the responsibility of an authority to watch over and guide over our city and make decisions that affect all of us. I pray that you would lead each and every one of them so that they can make fruitful contributions to deal with every item on the agenda today. The word declares that we should acknowledge you in all of our ways and that you would direct our paths. And you said if we delight ourselves in you, that you would give us the desires of our heart. So today, I ask that you would work mightily in them today. Come into this room and let them have a productive meeting and let there be a sense of agreement and cooperation, that they can come to peaceful solutions for the benefit of our community. And even in their executive session, lead them, guide them with wisdom, courage, and integrity to hear in the concerns of our citizens and make decisions that will benefit all of us. And so I pray, I pray for the mayor, I pray for the staff and assistants, the city council members, the city manager, and every person and department that is instrumental in leading and directing our cities. I pray for the police chief, the entire police force, the dispatchers, the sheriff's department, that they may continue to protect and serve the residents of our city. I pray for the fire chief and the fire department and all first responders who serve. And lastly, I pray for continued economic prosperity and safety for our city, that you may draw in and attract to our city businesses, industry, and corporations that will help them produce jobs and revenue and help us to grow and prosper. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Today, our agenda is full of proclamations, so I think we'll probably spend more time on the proclamations than we will on the agenda. So welcome everyone who is here to receive a proclamation today. The first one is our National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So those of you in the audience, please come forward. Good morning. You just kind of start right there, you'll be fine. And then the rest of them can come back over here. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Public safety telecommunications professionals play a critical role in emergency response. Their work extends far beyond relaying information between the public and first responders. When responding to reports involving missing, abducted, or sexually exploited children, the information gathered and actions taken by these professionals form the foundation for an effective response. Moreover, in situations involving hostage-taking or suicidal individuals calling 911, public safety telecommunications are often the first point of contact. Their negotiation skills can be pivotal in preventing the situation from escalating. These professionals serve as the initial and most vital contact for citizens in need of emergency services. They act as a primary link for police officers and firefighters, monitoring their activities via radio, providing crucial information, and ensuring their safety. The public safety telecommunications at the San Angel Public Safety Communications Center have significantly contributed to apprehending criminals, suppressing fires, treating patients, and maintaining public safety. However, the demanding nature of their jobs takes a toll, both emotionally and physically, exacerbated by long hours and the round-the-clock nature of their work. Therefore, it's imperative that all levels of government recognize and acknowledge the life-saving and protective role these professionals play in society. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 14th to the 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in San Angelo, Texas, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and council, for letting us be here. And thank you for everybody that's showing up today. My name is John Bellini. I'm the sergeant that runs the communications center here in San Angelo. I have some people over here to my left and one right here to my right, who have decided to commit their careers to this city and to the citizens here. And I'd just like to recognize them very quickly in their years of service, starting with Linda Waller, 27 and a half years. On the end, Harley Williams with six years. Right next to hers, Fiona Maldonado with seven years. And then Matthew and, I'm sorry, Matthew and Jeremy, were both with one and a half years. And Soraya, right next to Jeremy, with eight months. This is a small portion of my crew. They have continued to work extremely hard. When we started, or when I took over 20 months ago, they were working 80-plus hours a week. And now, finally, they can have time off to spend with their family. They have buckled down and continue to serve every single day, and it's extremely appreciated. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is S A I S D Difference Maker Day. So I know we have a lot of folks in the audience. Please come forward. Good morning. Good. It's a good day. It's a good day. Thank you. Glad to have you here. San Angelo Independent School District educators and staff impact the future of San Angelo daily through their care for and dedication and commitment to the children of our city. Their impact happens from the moment a child steps on a bus, walks through the school door, is fed a nourishing breakfast, and throughout the day until the last bell and beyond. Educators and the entire S A I S D team make a difference in each child's life. And with more than 13,000 students, this is an incredible impact on our community. Today, we acknowledge the special commitment our S A I S D educators and staff have on the well-being of our children. They provide a relevant and inspiring education, preparing future-ready graduates. These graduates may one day care for your loved ones as a nurse or doctor at a local hospital, address cybersecurity threats that impact our community, create beautiful artwork or music for others to enjoy, or go on to teach the next generation of San Angelans. At S A I S D, they often say, "Our people make the difference." And today, we honor the San Angelo difference makers, those who inspire and prepare our students and support their hopes and dreams. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council and together with San Angelo Independent School District, do hereby recognize April 19th, 2024, as S A I S D Difference Maker Day, and thank all S A I S D educators and staff for their dedicated service to our students and families, and urge all citizens to acknowledge the occasion of this day. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning, everyone. Mayor Gunter, city council members, thank you for carving out time for us. My name is Chris Moran. I have the honor of serving San Angelo Independent School District as the superintendent. And as the mayor mentioned, Friday, the 19th, is our third annual Difference Makers Day, as we serve our over 13,000 students. We recognize that teachers are the center of the wheel. We are here to support the teachers. But every staff maker is a molder of dreams. And we are so thankful to make a difference in children's lives. It's a calling. It's a mission field, and we believe in it. And so we're here to celebrate that and to acknowledge this day on the 19th. The important thing for us to say publicly is how much we appreciate our community partners. Because on this particular day, community partners are joining together to provide a treat for each one of our students and to acknowledge the work that our teachers are doing. And so we invite you to join us in doing that. And also, there's, never underestimate the power of a handwritten note. As community members, many of you know teachers in the district or staff members. Taking five minutes to write a note to them will mean a great deal. So thank you, Mayor and council, for acknowledging this Difference Makers Day on Friday, April 19th. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move everybody in front of the podium now. The next proclamation I have is Month of the Military Child. Any other individuals here to receive this proclamation, please come forward. Good morning. There's more room over here, so you can come over here. Since 1986, the Department of Defense has recognized military children during the month of April. The commitment and sacrifice of our military's youngest heroes in supporting the brave men and women of the U.S. Armed Forces is worthy of honor and celebration. The unique demands upon the children of our military personnel do not go unnoticed, from often being the new child in school or the feeling of missing a parent deployed while serving our country. Here in San Angelo, we are pleased to have Goodfellow Air Force Base. Strong military families that call our community home add so much to our West Texas community. Today and for the month of April, we will make a special effort to lift up our military families and to salute them and the contribution and resilience of our military children. As part of this salute, San Angelo ISD is partnering with the City of San Angelo to honor our military families and children. The city and S A I S D invite our San Angelo community to join in our salute and gratitude. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council and together with San Angelo Independent School District administrators, principals, educators, staff, and students, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of April as Month of the Military Child, and urge all the citizens of San Angelo to acknowledge the occasion of this month in honor and recognition of the outstanding strength of our military children and their families, and in gratitude of their sacrifice. Who's speaking? You can speak again.
Well, I'm not sure I could have said it any better or more clearly. I would like to acknowledge the fact that we have folks with us today. Here, we've got our board members, several of our board members. We have our family life counselors that connect our military students and support them. And we're grateful that these ladies are here with us. We're excited about the fact that we have three Purple Star campuses, Glenmore Elementary, Glen Middle School, and Central High School, which acknowledges the support being given to connect these military kids, families, and the students. The mayor said it very well, that these students experience things that most kids don't. And we acknowledge that. We support these students, and we love these students. There are more than 500 of those students in our district, and we count each one of them special individual, and we love them. So today, we're reminding everyone that April 15th is Purple Up Day. We encourage you to wear purple. Even those who are Aggies, pull out the purple and support this endeavor. And I'd like to welcome 17 Training Wing Commander Colonel Angelina McGinnis to the podium. Commander?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Mayor Gunter and the city council members, thank you for having us here today to recognize an amazing group of Americans. I stand here today with a sense of pride and gratitude as we gather to recognize and honor a special group within our community, and that's the military children that reside within our base and across the San Angelo community. Since 1986, April has been designated the month of the military child. It is a time when we collectively acknowledge the incredible sacrifices and challenges that our military children endure. These young heroes, who often go unnoticed, face unique obstacles that come with being part of a military family. Just like the dandelion flower, military children are scattered across the globe, adapting and thriving in every corner of the world. They bloom wherever they are planted, embodying the spirit of resilience and adaptability. The average military family moves three to five times more often than their civilian counterparts, forcing military children to constantly adjust to new schools, new friends, and new environments. Here in our own community, we have over 2,273 military-connected students who, like their peers across the nation, navigate the challenges of deployments and frequent relocations with courage and grace. But they are not alone. Our children are supported by Goodfellow Air Force Base School Liaison, Ms. Kristen Dolson. Where is she? There she is. And through initiatives like the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children, which allowed the state to take proactive steps to ensure that our military children receive the support they need to succeed academically despite the disruptions caused by their parents' service. Furthermore, they are supported by our outstanding partnership with the San Angelo community, and I need to give you all a round of applause as well. They are our kids, but you take care of them every day in our schools, after-school programs, churches, and community support systems. So I ask that we come together this April and every day thereafter to continue celebrating our military children, wear purple, and show them that their sacrifices do not go unnoticed. Thank you.
We're going to do a picture so everybody could shift. We need to have lunch. Okay, good. Thank you, thank you. Our next proclamation is National Donate Life Month. National, so everyone, please come forward if you're here for this proclamation, please. Welcome, welcome. Welcome. Yeah, you're fine. She's fine. National Donate Life Month was established in 2003 by Donate Life America and its partnering organizations. Observed annually in April, National Donate Life Month aims to raise awareness about donation, encourage Americans to register as organ, eye, and tissue donors, and honor those who have made a difference by saving lives through the gift of donation. The act of organ, eye, and tissue donation is one of the most profound gifts a person can give to another, a gift of life. Currently, over 109,000 children and adults are in need of life-saving transplants, with more than 80,000 individuals awaiting this opportunity in Texas alone. Choosing to be an organ donor has the potential to save up to eight lives, while tissue donation can enhance many more. The generosity and sacrifice of donors provide men, women, and children with a second chance at life. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as National Donate Life Month, and urge everyone to actively participate in this life-saving endeavor by educating themselves about organ, eye, and tissue donation, making sure their families are aware of their intentions, and registering their decisions either online at www.donatelife.net or through the Department of Motor Vehicles. Who would like to receive this? Come on. Let me do the full circle. Come on, girl. Come in front of the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor and city council, for having us today. April is a significant month as it marks Donate Life Month. It's a time dedicated to raise awareness about the importance of organ, eye, and tissue donation. Throughout the month, we take time to honor our donors and their families, celebrate the lives saved through our transplantation, and encourage more individuals to register as organ donors. Here in our community, there are over 22,000 people in Tom Green County who have yet to register to, they're registered to decision to give the gift of life. So as I do stand here to represent TOSA, Texas, or Texas Organ Sharing Alliance, I am thankful to work and collaborate alongside the leaders at Shannon Medical Center to make donation happen. Together, we do share the love of our mission, which is saving lives through the power of organ donation.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our last proclamation is Fair Housing Month. So all of you, please come forward for this proclamation. The Fair Housing Act, the landmark civil rights law, was approved by Congress and signed into law by President Lyndon B. Johnson on April 11th, 1968. This landmark legislation aimed to eradicate discrimination in housing transactions. Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 specifically prohibits housing discrimination based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, disability, and familial status. Each April, real estate professionals commemorate the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. The San Angelo Association of Realtors actively promotes equity and routine housing business practices. They work towards ensuring fair and decent housing opportunities for everyone, adhering to the National Association of Realtors, NAR, policy that supports equal opportunity based on sexual orientation and gender identity. This commitment is outlined in their Code of Ethics, which authorizes sanctions for members found in violation of any fair housing law, including local and state laws. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in San Angelo, Texas, as an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities to provide and advocate for equal housing for all residents and prospective residents of San Angelo, Texas. Who would like to receive this?
Good morning. I'm Ashley Hambride. I'm the immediate past president for the San Angelo Association of Realtors. Thank you, Mayor Gunter, and esteemed council members for having us this morning. April is National Fair Housing Month, as Mayor Gunter stated. A place to call home is a big part of the American dream, and fair housing laws help make that dream come true. This landmark legislation ensures Americans have equal access to housing of their choice, free from discrimination based on race, color, religion, gender, disability, familial status, and national origin. All real estate brokers and agents must follow fair housing laws, which cover specific classes of people. Those who choose to be Texas Realtors also pledge to abide by a Code of Ethics, keeping issues of fairness to everyone at the forefront of their business. So we're very proud to be here today. Thank you so much.
Just to let everyone know, we're experiencing some technical issues today, so our closed captions in the room are not available, and we apologize for the inconvenience.
We will now move into the public comment section of our agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their names and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do I have people here for public comment? Hi, Jackie.
Give me a minute to get set up and organized, please, without counting down my timer.